Good evening, everyone. If I could ask you to please take your seats. Good evening again. My name is Bruce Humphrey. I am president and CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all of you to the 2018 City Council Candidate Forum presented by your Chamber of Commerce. In just a few months, voters will head to the polls to cast their votes. It is our hope that this evening's conversation will help answer some questions that may help voters make their decisions. If you have questions for the candidates, please fill out a candidate card, and you can drop them off here to my right. Or during the forum, if there are questions that come up, we'll have some people collecting those as well. This forum is being recorded by KMVT and will be uploaded to the Chamber's website as soon as possible. Before we begin, I'd like to take a few minutes and recognize some distinguished guests I have, we have with us this evening. Our elected officials are Vice Mayor Lisa Maticek, Councilmember and former mayor Ken Rosenberg. I also heard that Councilmember John McAllister and former mayor John McAllister was here, but, ah. Gotta eat, right? Okay. From the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, we have Mr. Matt Pear, our co-chair of Business Issues and Public Policy Committee, sitting next to me. And at this time, it is my honor to introduce the candidates. From your left to right, Allison Hicks, John Inks, Ellen Comay, Lucas Ramirez, Pat Showalter, and Lenny Siegel. Before we begin with candidates' opening remarks, I'd like to give the rules of engagement. The rules of engagement for this evening are: Each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks and one minute to answer each question. So candidates, please be concise. As a reminder, this forum is intended to inform the public. It is not a debate. Debating or criticizing another candidate is not acceptable and will not be tolerated during our conversation this evening. I would also like to remind the audience that you will most likely hear opinions that may differ from yours this evening, and I just ask that you are respectful and respect everyone's opinions. Finally, our timekeeper Jocelyn was in the center there, seated in the front row, will be our timekeeper and let candidates know when they are running out of time, and then there's going to be a "time's up" sign, and unfortunately, time's up. So we will begin. Let's begin with our candidate opening remarks, starting with Allison Hicks.
Hi.
Hit the red button.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Allison Hicks. Mountain View is poised to grow tremendously over the next several years. We may even become the fastest-growing city in the Bay Area. I'm running to make sure that that growth is great growth. We need to get the details right. I have a master's in city planning from UC Berkeley, and over the past two decades, I've worked on urban projects in places spanning from Oakland down to San Jose. I worked in Oakland when now-governor, then-mayor Jerry Brown was trying to bring and did bring eventually 10,000 new residents to the downtown. Also, in addition to building the housing, we revitalized key buildings like the Fox Theater. We ran a facade and small business program, and we transformed the downtown into a vital, compact, and mixed-use hub. I was also the interim executive director for the Northern California Land Trust. This was an affordable housing nonprofit that created a number of types of affordable housing, ranging from homeless transitional housing to very affordable shared housing, and also middle-income housing, missing-middle housing. I also worked for the city of San Jose as an urban planner, creating walkable streets in Willow Glen with shady trees, adequate parking, and great uses. And I worked for the Living Classroom that greened schoolyards and parks in Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Los Altos. Again, we're in a time of great change in Mountain View. Oops, time's up. And I would like to be a strong advocate for creating great change. Thank you.
John?
I am John Inks. I have a long history with the city that actually started pouring cider at a Christmas tree lighting. And that was bottled by becoming a regular volunteer with the city, eventually a volunteer mediator, helping neighbors dealing with cat or animal issues and fences and signs, that sort of stuff. Very worthwhile experience. I was appointed to the Park and Rec Commission and served there for five years in Planning Commission, elected to council in 2008, re-elected 2012, served as mayor in 2013, and termed out of office last January. Looking forward to full retirement. But something happened personally to me this year. I have a strong interest and capacity for work, and what better place to come back to work than the city of Mountain View? In my closing remarks, I'm going to talk about some of the objectives in my campaign, where I hope to attract the interest of voters, to get me back on the council. And I will be talking in my closing remarks about the objectives that I have for working with the council to improve things like housing in the city. See electings.com, and please vote for John Inks November 6.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ellen Comay. The story of my family starts here in Mountain View. My grandparents met cutting flowers here. They were interned during World War II but returned to Mountain View, and I think that speaks to the diversity of the city and what a welcoming place it is. And my grandfather washed dishes at Dina's Restaurant on El Camino for some time. He was a gardener, saved up enough money, and opened his own flower-growing business on Bryant Avenue, which is near Mountain View High School. Seven years ago, I moved back to Mountain View when both of my grandparents got sick. They both are no longer with us, but I've been able to stay in Mountain View. And in that time, I've become very engaged in the city. I've been on the city's Environmental Planning Commission for the last six years, serving as both chair and vice chair. I have been volunteering with our Mountain View Police Officers Association, our Mountain View Firefighter Randoms Acts, and I have, for the last four years, bought on the Leadership Advisory Council for the Mountain View Chamber. Some of the things that I have seen over my last six years, particularly on the EPC, is a need to address something that's missing, which is solutions for our missing-middle, our middle-income residents. Mountain View has been a leader in the region addressing our housing crisis. But for those of us who are above the 80% adjusted median income, we need some solutions. I'm also thinking about, as we grow and develop our quality of life, how do we make sure that we maintain our open space and do that in a sustainable manner without increasing our greenhouse gas emissions? And how do we make sure that we keep our top-quality public services, like our police and fire, as they're needing to commute two to three hours away? I look forward to the conversation this evening and answering the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas?
Good evening. My name is Lucas Ramirez, and I also am a candidate for Mountain View City Council. Thank you very much to the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce for organizing this candidate forum. Very briefly, I'm running because I am concerned about the impact of the housing crisis on our community. I believe it is the existential crisis facing Mountain View. I'm also concerned about related impacts, the traffic congestion that we're experiencing, issues with transportation safety. I'm also very concerned about climate change. My credentials include serving on the Environmental Planning Commission. I served on the Human Relations Commission and two years as chair of that commission. I've served on the VTA Citizens Advisory Committee and had the opportunity to provide input on 2016 Measure B, which was the sales tax increase to fund transportation projects throughout the county. And I'm a longtime observer to the Mountain View City Council on behalf of the League of Women Voters. I've been observing meetings since 2012. I believe I have a very solid understanding of the issues, and I similarly look forward to answering the questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
Hi, I'm Pat Showalter, and I've been a resident of Mountain View for 34 years. These last four years, it's been such an honor to serve on the city council. And serving as your mayor in 2016 was just an amazing experience. As I promised in 2014, I've championed housing, reducing traffic, and protecting our environment. I've continued Mountain View City Council's longstanding custom of conducting our business with civility. That's really served our community well, and it's something that I think we should be proud of and talk about more and support. We've had a lot of accomplishments in the last four years. I got to vote to raise the minimum wage. We added 2,500 new housing units. 370 of them are affordable. We have added many, many bike lanes, making our streets safer for bikes and pedestrians. And we've opened three new parks, and we have seven more on the drawing board. I'm also really proud of convening the Sustainability Task Force 2 so we can understand what we need to do to meet our greenhouse gas goals. Housing is the big issue in Mountain View. We know that the best place to put it is near jobs and transit, but we need to protect and preserve the quality of life for everyone. Last December, the city council passed the North Bay Shore Precise Plan, which includes almost 10,000 housing units, with 20% of them affordable. Now, we need to get that housing built. If I'm elected to a second term of city council, that will be job one for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny?
Thanks. When I took office in January of 2015, I made a speech, which is on one of my websites, and I recently read it. And it laid out my goals for the four years of my first term. And, you know, we're doing it. Mountain View is a leader in building housing. We're doing what we can to protect quality of life, environmental sustainability. We're moving ahead with some advanced transportation ideas. Again, Mountain View is a leader for this region, and what I've tried to do as a council member and now as mayor is proselytize to some of our neighboring communities that haven't quite got the message yet, that we can't solve the housing problem and the transportation problem by ourselves, but we can set a good example. So we aren't just building housing. We're building mixed-use, median-density neighborhoods, complete with housing, offices, retail, parks, and schools, and transit. Did I say transit twice? That's because it's important. So we're setting a model for what all of Silicon Valley should be doing. But as Pat said, you know, we still haven't built one unit in North Bay Shore. We've got some great plans. We have some decisions to make. And my suggestion is not only to elect me to stay the course, but make sure that the people you vote for want to stay the course, want to build that housing, want to make sure that the people that are being thrown out of apartments on Rock Street have a chance to stay in Mountain View and serve food to Google cafeteria workers and teach in our schools and drive our buses, because we're losing people we need for our community, and I want to keep them here. Finally, over the last couple of years, I've been speaking out in the plaza, various places, against the Trump administration. Even though we don't vote in Mountain View on national politics, it's important that our community stand up on immigration, on housing funding, net neutrality, whatever, because what happens in Washington is going to affect us.
Thank you. Well, let's give them a round of applause for their opening comments. And we'll begin with some of the chamber questions. And our first question is: If elected, how will you seek input from the business community on public policy issues facing Mountain View? We'll start again with Allison.
So when I worked for the city of Oakland and also for the city of San Jose, I talked to many members of the business community, and I would have the same policies here as I did there. You know, my door would always be open. I would convene meetings, when there are, you know, call meetings proactively, when there are issues to discuss. And I would listen with an open mind, listen without preconceived notions to develop options for solutions.
Thank you. John?
Well, in my time off from council, I wasn't exactly idle. I joined that same business issues and public policy group. And actually, looking back, some of the things that I heard in those conversations about the chamber and issues that they were dealing with, the city, and things in general in the community, that probably sparked some interest in getting back on council. So I would continue my participation in the business, the BIP, so to speak, and, of course, very mindful of, you know, other interests in the community at the same time. My experience in public policy is that there's give and take in all issues. Everybody is not completely satisfied with what they want. It's the nature of compromise.
Thank you. Ellen?
The policy issues that we face in Mountain View are large, and something that I feel that I bring as a candidate is my regional experience. In my career, I've worked at the city, county, state, and federal government levels. So I have experience dealing with bureaucracy and dealing with various stakeholders at the table. And one of the most important things is, when doing a convening, is seeking input from everyone and then asking, who else do we need at this meeting? Who are we missing at the table? And it's approaching it with, what do we need to do now, right now? And what does the future look like? How will these policies live on after we make these decisions?
Thank you. Lucas?
Thank you. The hallmarks of my tenure, should I have the good fortune to be elected, will be accessibility and collaboration. I want to be able to work with all stakeholder groups, even if we don't agree on issues. I believe I was the first candidate to speak to the BIP. And I remember asking, you know, please ask me the difficult questions, because I'm very interested in hearing, you know, it's not just about me sharing my opinions on things, but also, you know, sort of a two-way dialogue. I want to hear what your positions are on issues. We will probably ask about the business tax later. Just to use that as an example, though, I think there could have been a much better way to approach the development of that tax in seeking a stakeholder input, the business community input, earlier, not starting with the question, how much money do we want to raise? But what is our shared vision for the evolution of Mountain View? And what are opportunities to work together to fund some of the transportation projects that we want to work on? So that's the kind of approach I'd like to take.
Thank you. Pat?
Every issue has five or six sides, at the very least. So it's really important when you're on city council to try, or I guess in any situation, to try and hear from the relevant people on whatever the issue is that's in front of you. And so I've, you know, I've done that through a series of ways. One, just meeting one-on-one with people, many people. It's great fun. I always learn a lot. And then there are many events in the business community, and there are great ways to just get to know various people in the business community and build up relationships. So that's another way. And then I think one of the things that I was complimented on that I was very happy to hear about, somebody's told me that I was an active listener. And I think that's also an important skill when dealing with other people and their opinions, is to listen completely to what's said.
Lenny?
Thanks. So my door literally has been open. I invite constituents, including businesses, into my living room on a regular basis, small businesses, developers, large businesses. There was one developer came over, and he stopped to take a picture of my front window, the sign that said the rent is too damn high. He got a kick out of that. So I've been walking the walk in terms of meeting with the business community, with the chamber many times, with the Downtown Business Association. What I try to do is come up with solutions that will not only benefit residents and support their quality of life, but benefit the business community at the same time. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next business-related question. And that is, what role do you see city council playing in Mountain View's current vibrant business community? And how do you see that changing in an economic downturn? Let's start with Lucas.
So one of the concerns I have about, let me take a step back. Mountain View, I think, has done a very good job preparing for an inevitable recession. You know, we've been budgeting prudently. We've been anticipating this for some time. I believe that that will help us weather the storm once it comes. One of the concerns I do have, though, is the impact that the inevitable recession will have to redevelopment. I believe that redevelopment is the tool that we have to help ensure that our community remains economically prosperous and vibrant. So I want to work with the development community in particular to make sure that we have, you know, the tools and mechanisms in place to make sure that we can continue to redevelop and implement the precise plans that the council has been working on and make sure that there are opportunities for businesses to grow and remain in Mountain View.
Thank you.
The city council has many ways that they can work to ensure a vibrant business community. One of them that was mentioned is BIP, of which I have been attending as well for many years. But I think it's also through using the Downtown Committee as a liaison, working with the Economic Development Department. And it's also doing convenings with downtown businesses. One of the things that I've been trying to look into is working with them on asking them, what are your needs? And I think that being a collaborator and starting that conversation is also helpful. As was mentioned, Mountain View's done a very good job about being fiscally prudent. The history of Castro Street has evolved greatly since the time of my grandparents and my dad. And it's always fun to drive down Castro for him to tell me what used to be here and what we've been able to do to create a walkable, bikeable, pedestrian-friendly downtown. But I think it is trying to have some safety measures in place.
Thank you. Lenny?
So as people have said, the city's planned for a downturn in our budgeting, and that's not a problem. The question is, how do we prepare for a downturn in the private sector? In my meetings with Google, they say, yeah, we expect to grow 10% a year indefinitely. And I said, that's not mathematically possible, although you do a pretty good job of it. So what I suggest is we emphasize housing development as opposed to office development, because when there's a downturn, there'll be a lot of empty offices, but there's a lot of pent-up demand of all these people commuting from places like Mountain House to Mountain View, who need housing here.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I've really been fortunate to serve on the council when we're having a booming economy. And one of the things that we're doing is taking advantage of this economy to get some wonderful things built in the city of Mountain View. And it's very important that the council makes just excellent land-use decisions so that the sort of the structure and the bones of our community are as good and as strong as they can possibly be. But we all know that that downturn is coming. And the city has a AAA bond rating, which is amazing. I think we're only one of 40 communities in the nation. We have good reserves. You know, I think that we know that the economy here is cyclical. And so when those cycles, when it happens, we will weather it. We will still be able to provide the services that the good people of Mountain View need and deserve.
Thank you. John?
I guess it was inevitable. Bruce, to understand the question, it originally started about supportive businesses in Mountain View?
The question is, I'll read it over. What role do you see city council playing in maintaining Mountain View's current vibrant business community? And how do you see that changing in an economic downturn?
If you go to my endorsements page, electings.com/endorsements, you'll see on there that I have three politicians, former Mountain View mayors. The bulk of the endorsements that I have are from people that you may not actually know, but it's the owner of Opal Cafe, the owners of A1 Forinato and others. I have business professionals, technology professionals. I don't have any endorsements from political jurisdictions outside of Mountain View. So I think the support that I've seen from the community coming forward from business indicates that I am responsive to business, especially small businesses. And I really haven't had any major support or interest from Google, per se. So I think that I have, through my campaign, established a record of reaching out and supporting business in Mountain View.
Thank you.
Hi. So I won't repeat what others have said about the city is well-prepared to help businesses through downtimes because of our reserves and our AAA rating. I think the second part of the question is helping guide development to be good development. You'll notice that cities that develop well don't decline that much during downtimes. Cities that develop poorly, that make poor land-use decisions, often people flee and they don't thrive as much. So I think that it's really important to have people at the helm who can make good development decisions and also design a bit for flexibility. An additional thing is, when I worked at the city of Oakland, we had a fabulous small-business loan program that would help people, it would help people in great times, but it would also help small businesses during downturns, when you're more likely to need to use that kind of help.
Thank you. Now, we're going to take one of our questions from our audience. And the question is: How do we have Mountain View more environmentally sustainable? Let's start with Lenny.
So the data on our greenhouse gas emissions suggests that transportation is the largest source. Now, most of our electricity is from renewable sources. So the idea is, since our electricity is renewable, to switch from gasoline-powered cars to electric cars, to electric heating and electric water heating in houses. So it's a two-phase thing. First, switch to renewable electricity, and then put things that are now supported by fossil fuels onto electricity. That's the main strategy. Sustainability is more than energy, so water is important. One of the things that we have to realize in terms of the medium-density housing that we're building, that is inherently more sustainable than sprawl. And sprawl has people out where they're subject to wildfires, they use more water, they use more energy. And by doing infill development, we're doing what's environmentally sustainable.
Thank you. Lucas?
Thank you. So the second Environmental Sustainability Task Force recently released a series of recommendations that will help the city aggressively tackle climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, primarily from transportation. Longer term, I think the solution is to have, to implement a land-use pattern that better complements transit. Right now, we have, not just in Mountain View, but throughout the Bay Area, segregated land uses that make it very difficult to get from one place to another by any mode other than driving, and predominantly driving alone. A key component of sustainability, in my opinion, and the best way for a municipality to tackle it is to think long-term about integrating land uses, so that way you can get around by walking, biking, by using transit modes that are better complemented by the land-use pattern that we're implementing, that will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It will help improve air quality. This is, I think, the primary way that we need to think about the evolution of the city over the next coming years.
Thank you. Allison?
So first, I wanted to say that I was very impressed with the report I read by the Mountain View Sustainability Task Force 2. There were a lot of good recommendations there. I was particularly impressed with one of their proposals for transportation, because transportation is one of the biggest contributors to greenhouse gas emission, which was pooled ride-sharing, discounted pooled ride-sharing, which was a way to, I won't explain it in detail, but it was a way to jump-start mass transit systems starting with those discount-pooled rideshares. I guess my... with those discount pooled rideshares. I guess my, one of my main concerns, I agree with what many other people have said about getting the land use arrangements right. One of my main concerns is that we're not developing enough affordable housing, and I'm speaking to more and more people, you know, people who work at the bank and work at restaurants, who are driving from Turlock and Gilroy, and I think we need to step up to the plate on that one.
Thank you. John?
Yes. I agree. Transportation is the big issue to deal with. Besides that, though, if you're getting your energy through a contract for renewable energy, the fact is that you're still getting whatever PG&E delivers, which is still 25% natural gas. So, I support the Sustainability Task Force. I went to some of their workshops here, and I have not read the 300-page report that reflects the incredible passion and interest in sustainability overall. I like to help people achieve real results, meaningful results from their efforts. And so I'm looking forward to the task force report, or the city report that comes out, after they do an evaluation of cost-benefit, and after they do a city survey.
Thank you. Ellen?
I see two ways for the city to tackle being more environmentally friendly. One, steps as a city, as the Environmental Sustainability Task Force 2 mentioned, a great way that we can address that is in our transit infrastructure and the creation of our buildings, the two largest emitters of greenhouse gas emissions, making sure that as we're designing those, we are doing them in the most environmentally conscious way. And the second, are steps we can individually take as residents. I recently attended a city-sponsored How to Be a Healthier Community event at the Senior Center, where people talked about opportunities for composting if they didn't live in a single-family home, working with their property owner to have a communal compost pile. We need to, for residents to be able to be more environmentally conscious, we need to make it easier for them. So what are steps that we can do to make it that we're not increasing our footprint in transit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat?
Well, kind of ditto to what everybody has said. And talking about the transportation, I think that, which is the largest source of our greenhouse gas, is one thing that wasn't mentioned, I think, enough, is the need to get people moving themselves around actively, either on bikes or walking. And of course, you do that by making the land use more supportive. And by, we're working very hard. We have a great bike plan, but right now, a lot of those bike paths don't connect. And if they don't connect, then that means there's some very scary intersections that people have to go through, and that's a real deterrent for people. So that's one thing. Another thing we want to do is we want to reduce the use of natural gas. So we want to get people to switch out and have electric water heaters and heat pumps. And we also, with, we want to make sure that our parks are really just oases for us all to enjoy.
Thank you. We'll move on to another question from our audience, and that question is, what are your thoughts on the housing crisis and type of housing? Let's go ahead and start with Lenny.
Thank you. Basically, the best way to build affordable housing in the current situation is to build lots of market-rate housing, because we can require 15% of those units to be affordable, and by doing that, we're going to more than double our affordable housing. Most of what we're going to build is going to be medium-density rental. We're hoping to build more townhouses aimed at the missing middle, but even that's not good enough, because people can't, entry-level people can't afford houses. So, one of the things I've been talking about for the last few years is community land trusts, which allow people to buy in at a lower price, and they don't make as much money when they sell. So, again, we're on the right track, but we need to work harder on the missing middle, because we need a diverse housing stock to serve all the different people who live and work in our community.
Thank you. Allison?
So, I think that the main way you create, the question was affordable housing?
No, no.
Okay, say it again.
The question was, what are your thoughts on the housing crisis and types of housing?
So, I guess I assumed that the housing crisis, it's supply and it's affordability. So, I think we're doing a great job, I mean, we're doing a better job than almost any other city around in adding to the housing supply. I have some concerns about the affordability crisis, because as we attract more high-income workers to the city, every high-income worker needs a number of low-income workers to serve them. And I'm not sure that the amount of additional, what I see is the amount of additional low-income jobs we're providing makes people drive from farther and farther away. Those are the conversations I'm having with people. So, I would like us to step up on, well, we need to create a better jobs-housing balance by not continually getting ahead of us, ourselves, and building more and more offices, so that we have to build more and more housing. And we also have to step up to the plate in creative ways to build more affordable housing.
Thank you. Ellen?
I'm excited to talk about housing and housing variety, because that's something that I support. For six years on the Environmental Planning Commission, I've seen a variety of projects, all affordable housing, like 801 North Ringstorf, we've seen All Market at 100 Moffett, and we've seen mixed use at the old Harv's Car Wash site. And I support those types of varieties in our city, because that's what it's going to take to create opportunities for residents to stay. At the root of our housing crisis is affordability. For me, I feel like Mountain View historically has been a middle-class city, and when we were looking at our Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers in March of this last year, and I saw goose egg, I saw zero for middle-income housing. That is something that I hope to create. And one of the things that I support is what the Housing Trust is putting forward, which is homeownership empowerment laws.
Thank you. Pat?
Well, the question was, what are my thoughts on the housing crisis? I guess my thoughts are that it's just this huge, multi-layered problem. We've been talking about, other people have been talking about building housing. That's certainly important. We need to increase the supply. But I think another part of the housing crisis is people who are losing their housing. We have an increase in homelessness in our community, and that's largely because the cost of housing is just so high that people get, lose their houses. We passed rent control a couple of years ago, because there was this incredible outcry of people who were being evicted. So, the housing crisis really affects everyone, and it's multi-layered. And we need to have just a very large toolbox of things that we use to work on it.
Thank you. John?
Yes, you can look at the housing crisis from a number of views. The way I look at it, though, is, under current city policies, a lot of the most naturally affordable housing is in the crosshairs. The apartments that you've read about in The Voice, and other smaller apartments vastly outnumber any BMR program that can be built, and, you know, the subsidized units. What I would emphasize on protecting the housing that's there, it's the stock of pre-95 apartments, which are now under the threat of being turned into million-dollar-plus row houses and townhouses. But that, and that's good for the community in one way, but it displaces, it's ending up displacing people. And I think, you know, I look at the low income and the greatest source of affordable property.
Thank you. Lucas?
There is no greater threat facing this community than the housing crisis. And fundamentally, I believe the source of the problem is the jobs-housing imbalance. We have considerable demand for housing and insufficient supply. So I believe, as I think most of our, all of our colleagues up here, that the solution is to add housing, particularly in areas where there are plenty of jobs and not enough or no opportunities to live near your jobs. I support not only adding housing in sort of an absolute sense, high-density housing, I also support looking at incremental density. The council has done a great job streamlining the opportunity to build ADUs. I would like to explore opportunities to build duplexes, triplexes in areas where we don't have a lot of opportunities for high-density housing. I support inclusionary zoning as a means to get affordable housing and otherwise market-rate developments. And I support commercial Lincoln fees to also add affordable housing. Thank you.
We'll switch back to one of our business questions here, and we'll take this one. In your opinion, what is the state of the relationship the council has with the business community? Let's start with John.
I would say, based on what I heard in the BIP meetings, there were some things that came up about the city relationship with the business community that I think are going to be an aggravation. And that is one sponsoring, you know, taking a very modest business license tax that was never changed since 1954, and replacing it with a brand-new, completely different, strictly progressive tax on employers. I'm concerned that, from the business standpoint, that, you know, smaller companies that want to start in Mountain View and grow in Mountain View, when you get to around 50 employees, I think some of them may be asking, you know, do we really want to get our startup here and grow in Mountain View, or stay in Mountain View? And so I think we need to address that threat to the business community.
Thank you. Lucas?
Similarly, based on what I've heard from the business community about the development of the business license tax, I think there are, there are opportunities to improve the relationship between the city and businesses. I think, you know, the business tax will either pass or fail in November, and the council will have to act accordingly. If it fails, then we need to come together and figure out a way to address the transportation crisis in finding revenue through some other form. If it passes, then I think we need to be very reasonable in our approach. In, what is passed is a cap, is a maximum, not necessarily. The council has discretion over how much to tax businesses. So we need to be reasonable in our approach and make sure that the expenditure plan is, benefits not only residents but also the business community. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Thank you. Lenny?
Yes, I've been talking to our business community since 2015 on the business license tax update. It is, for, most of the businesses consider it a drop in the bucket. The way we've graduated, it's, whether it be a small business or a large business, it's really not going to make a lot of difference to them. What's more important for business is that they have a way to get workers. We need housing here, we need transportation here. And this tax is targeted to providing the transportation that our companies need to get people to work. Not just our companies, our schools, our restaurants, Google, everybody needs what we're going to be using that money for. So the way I see it is, we're doing something that our business community wants, and most people don't want to have their taxes raised, but we're doing it in a way that will benefit the business community as well as the rest of Mountain View.
Thank you. Allison?
Gosh, I guess I'm just repeating what people have said. So, when I was at a recent BIP meeting, the grumbling that I did hear was the same grumbling that other people have mentioned, and it was about the business license tax. I do think, though, that we're urbanizing, and when you look at other, I don't want to repeat myself, other urban cities, other cities, larger cities, they, you need some kind of tax system. So, now it's on the ballot, voters will vote or not vote for it, and if they don't vote for it, we're going to have to have, you know, a longer discussion about how do we become a more urban place and provide the kinds of services to address, for example, homelessness and transportation that larger cities have to address.
Thank you. Ellen?
We're fortunate that Mountain View is a gem that people want to house their businesses in. But something I think that we learned from the business license tax conversation is that when we talk about the business community, business community means businesses of all sizes, small, medium, and large. And something that the findings showed is, we have more medium-sized businesses in the city, and how are we making sure that we are cultivating their growth and creating opportunities? Because most likely, the people who work at those businesses are middle-income residents. I also think it's a lesson in how to be transparent and collaborative, and to meet with the different stakeholder groups that may have varying opinions when putting forward a tax.
Thank you. And Pat?
Well, the question was, the state of the relationship between the council and the business community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, it seems like we, I'm going to talk a little bit about the organizations that we have to work with, with the business community. We have a very collaborative relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. They rent a building from the city. It needs a little help right now, but anyway, you do rent the building. The Chamber of Commerce runs the Leadership Mountain View program, which the city certainly supports and does wonderful things for the city. We have a downtown business association, which we work with on a regular basis, and for our local downtown interests. And then, on a region basis, we have the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. So I think that we have positive relationships, the city council of Mountain View has positive relationships, and interacts regularly with all three of these organizations, and that's a good thing. And I hope we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. We'll move on to another question from our audience. Please give your solution to RVs on the streets of Mountain View. We'll start with Lucas.
I might get the easy one. So, I think as an interim solution, the council, the city will need to implement a robust, safe parking program. Right now, we have the Lots of Love program, which provides an opportunity for a small number of predominantly car dwellers to sleep overnight in church parking lots. It's not sufficient, given the huge number of RVs and cars that are parked throughout the city. I would support exploring opportunities on public land to provide a place for vehicle and RV dwellers, with, providing access to basic services and amenities as a way to draw them. But long-term, we have to move aggressively to find opportunities for the people living in those RVs and cars to relocate to permanent supportive housing. And that's going to be expensive, it's going to be very time-consuming, but that's the only way, I believe, that we can find any kind of permanent resolution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yes, I have, on my issues page at electings.com, I talk about this issue. And, you know, as an occasional, not very often, I've been an urban camper myself. But I don't, I leave the site clean, I don't make a mess, I don't do it very often. The RVs on the streets, though, are a problem for neighborhoods. I would suggest that one thing that we do, see, the problem is, the city does not have a social services function. When they look at this problem, you have expensive city manager, city management office personnel going out and taking surveys and stuff, but they're city, they're professional managers, they're not social workers. And so I think in the interim, first, don't subsidize, you know, habits that don't satisfy both sides of the community. I mean, a lot of people are aggravated, you know, when they see a land yacht parked.
Thank you. Lenny?
So, people don't realize that we've been housing people, we've been enforcing against people who break the lard, release waste. So, we're doing our best, given the fact that we keep generating people who can't afford the rent. So, my solution, like Lucas, is to find more places to have large sanctioned encampments, not just on public lands, but on some of our properties where businesses have closed recently. Also, I've asked staff to identify streets where we ban overnight parking and industrial areas that might be suitable for people living in their vehicles. But let me say one thing. But let me say one thing, I will not be intimidated by the intolerant few who think that somehow we can just whack-a-mole and knock these people out of our community and not still have a problem. We have to show compassion, we have to realize that these people are here the same reason we are, we need them for our economy, and I'm not going to throw them out just because we don't like to look at them.
Thank you. Allison?
So, yeah, we have the beginnings to a solution to this problem, in part through Measure, the Measure A Housing Bond, where, that people generously voted for. A component of that is rapid rehousing of our houseless population. I think, though, what we're seeing is an increase in that population, and we're going to have to step that up, and I think that there are ways to do that. I think that this is not just a Mountain View problem, it's a regional problem, and you probably know some of the cities around us don't allow, don't allow parking. I think that we should have a conversation with Measure A as a county measure. I think we should have a conversation with the county about greater solutions. I know in other places, on federal property, in unused offices, on unused land, people are housed. I don't think they have to be housed, they can be housed partly here, but they can be housed elsewhere as well. And I think we need to devote more money to that and kick it off, start it up more quickly.
Thank you. Pat?
This really is a difficult problem. We've been working on it for several years, very actively, and we've, it's really been something that we've learned as we've gone along. We did discover very early on that there was an incredible need for assistance with working through the social services and getting people rapidly rehoused. We actually fund three full-time equivalents to work on just that. One is a Mountain View police officer, one is somebody through CSA, and one is somebody through the County Office of Housing. But in Mountain View, and I think everywhere, being poor is not a crime. And that's really kind of the issue, part of this issue. We do need to, however, be strict about people that live in RVs that are having criminal activity, and it's a big balancing act.
Thank you. Ellen?
Homelessness is an important issue, and it's not only in Mountain View, but we're seeing it all over our region. And as was mentioned, I think that it has been, Mountain View is a compassionate city. When our neighbors are having parking restrictions, I think that also brings a natural nexus to vehicles here. I have been supported by our public safety, and actually, just yesterday, I was on a ride-along doing safety checks of our vehicle dwellers. And I think that something that we need to do is, the programs like Lots of Love are, you know, a short-term solution, because what people really need are jobs and more stable housing, rapid rehousing, which was mentioned. But it's not a long-term solution to live out of your RV, and how can we help partnering with CSA, partnering with different nonprofits, to make sure that there is an end to that.
Thank you. We'll move on to another question from our audience, and that is, what will you look for in applicants for the Rental Housing Committee? Let's start with John.
Sure. You know, very familiar with the Rental Housing Committee. I went to more of the Rental Housing Committee meetings than City Council meetings. And the composition of that committee, until Tom Means resigned Monday night, was pretty divided. And it indicates how divisive that issue is. This is the most divisive issue I have seen since I've lived in Mountain View for 43 years. And, you know, as far as an appointment to the committee, I think that Julian Pardo De Zella, who is the alternate, will fill in for a while. I personally think that he brings a perspective, he's a trained attorney, I don't know about his economics, but I think that he would be a good replacement, and I'm hoping that the council actually moves him on. But in any case...
Thank you. Allison?
So I would be looking for some, somebody who had the time and ability to read the materials, which is sometimes hard to do. I would also be looking for, you know, this is a measure that was passed by our community, so I would be looking for somebody who would uphold the community will and be able to listen, listen fairly, listen with an open mind, and collaborate with others.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I'd like to dito what Allison said. I really think that we, this is a law, I mean, in addition to our city charter, it's part of our code. And so people who are on the RAC need to have a commitment to make this program work. And they need to have a strong sense of fairness, they need to have, be active listeners, and they really need the ability to work well with others.
Thank you. Ellen?
Mountain View voters have let us know that tackling affordability is a priority for them. And for anyone who serves on a committee, whether it be Rental Housing or Planning Commission, you hope that you have people who are collaborators, who have some type of experience that they can bring. Having different perspectives is key, I think, to trying to bring as many different voices to the table as possible, because everyone is experiencing something different. And as was mentioned, having fairness and being just, having that in mind, because there should be a shared goal, whether that be a project or the task at hand, which here is to be implementing rent control.
Thank you. Lenny?
Let's skip the euphemisms. When this came before the council, we had three council members who said they did not want to appoint anybody to the Rental Housing Committee who had worked for Measure V. And that's the reason we're in this mess. We have people who do not want to make it work. So I'm going to ask throughout the campaign, all of the other candidates, Pat's already done it, Ken did it, even though he didn't support Measure V, will you be willing to appoint to the Rental Housing Committee people who've worked for Rent Control?
Thank you. Lucas?
I supported Measure V in 2016. I support the fair and just implementation of Measure V, and I would support candidates for the Rental Housing Committee who are genuinely interested in the fair and just implementation of Measure V. I do think it's important to have all stakeholders represented. I think there are, a landlord brings a valid perspective, so does a tenant. I think it's important to have a committee that is diverse and reflects the community. But fundamentally, I am also interested in appointing candidates who want to make sure that the program is successful. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to a business-related question here, and that is, as you know, or most of you should know, 82% of our businesses in Mountain View have 10 employees or less, and 97% of our businesses in Mountain View have 50 employees or less. And how do you see the council helping these businesses, especially small business, attract and retain employees? And do you even think that that's a problem? Let's start with Lenny.
Well, I've been telling this to the national media lately when we discuss Measure P, the Business License Tax. The biggest problem for employers is to recruit and retain employees. And that's true for the school districts in the city as well as the business community. And so the number-one thing we can do is provide housing. Number two, provide a quality of life that will attract people. And three, reinforce the educational institutions at all levels in our community that attract the kind of people who want to work in tech. Not all our businesses are tech, but Mountain View is a welcoming community, but we're forcing a lot of people out. I've met with the people on Rock Street that John's referred to. These are people we need in our community, we can't force them out, we have to make it possible for them to stay here because our employers need them.
Thank you. John?
Can you repeat the question, please, to make sure I stay on track?
Oh, yes. The question was, well, as you know, 82% of our businesses have 10 employees or less, and 97% of the businesses in Mountain View have 50 employees or less. And how do you see the council helping these businesses attract and retain employees? And we're talking mostly about small business in this case.
Right. Okay, so at any level, small businesses are impacted by this employer tax at some level, significantly more than they were in the past. Do you think going from $30 to $200 a year is, you know, that should be affordable? No, some of the businesses, like the restaurants, that are, you know, marginally profitable, they are directly impacted by this tax. And that's why, you know, right now, I'm not too wild about it, because of the impact it has even on the smaller businesses.
Thank you. Lucas?
I had the good fortune to work for a small business based in downtown Los Altos for six years. And the primary challenge that we had in attracting and retaining talent was the housing crisis. We had several full-time employees were based off-site. We had folks in Washington, in Tennessee, in Florida. We had some workers who were commuting from Pleasanton, we had workers who were commuting from Bakersfield. It was very challenging to find people who, you know, were able to afford the rents or the housing costs locally. And I think that is where the council has the greatest impact, in helping small businesses attract talent, working aggressively to address the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
As, you know, the granddaughter and daughter of small business owners that owned and operated land here in Mountain View, I think about this all the time, especially as we walk down Castro Street and we see the Help Wanted signs. And yes, employees want to live near where they work, and to do that, they would love to have transit to do that, which are things that we've discussed. But something that Mountain View, I believe, used to have in the late '80s was a Small Business Council, where they would be able to meet with businesses ranging in the sizes that you mentioned, and be able to give input through the chamber and to the city. I'd like to champion that and bring that back, so we can hear directly from them. Because sometimes, when we're in certain meetings, our larger businesses are there, but small businesses are always the ones who are working that front desk and making sure that all their employees get paid first before them, so hearing firsthand from them would be important.
Thank you. Pat?
Well, people have mentioned the housing crisis, and that's really the biggest issue. And making more affordable housing, one way to do that is by increasing the number of accessory dwelling units that we have. We have relaxed those requirements, but it's possible we could relax them more. Another thing that hasn't been mentioned is improving access to transit. If you're really on a very, very tight budget, utilizing transit can be a problem. So I think that we could make things better for a lot of these small businesses, especially restaurant workers, by making sure that we can get ecopasses for a much larger percentage of our population. I think that's one of the recommendations in the Sustainability Task Force, is to improve people's access to transit. So I think that's another thing. But the main thing is really the housing.
Thank you. And Allison?
Yeah, so I would agree that affordable housing, housing affordable to employees dwarfs really all other costs that you might talk about, all other obstacles. And I've seen this, my kids were going to, going to high school here, high school, and I saw this problem directly in that it's not just attracting employees, it's attracting and retaining them. They had trouble first attracting good teachers, or attracting teachers, and then often, teachers would kind of use the schools as a training ground, and then move away to places with more affordable housing later. So, yeah, it's affordable housing. I guess I don't have time to address it in great detail, but I would say one thing that concerns me, the jobs-housing balance is one of the things that makes housing prices, being out of balance, one of the things that makes prices skyrocket. And I'm particularly concerned that in my own neighborhood, which is the downtown, we're scheduled to get a lot of offices and not a lot of housing, and I would like to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. What can Mountain View do to make public transportation more viable for residents? And what ideas do you have for improving public transportation? Let's start with Ellen.
So I've lived in very large cities all over, and I think that the one thing that will get people out of their cars is if it's easy for them. And one way we can make that easy for them is, it was mentioned, I think, previously on another question, is the access to connected trails throughout our cities. I have seen people using Stevens Creek Trail to go through Sunnyvale, Mountain View, going up through Palo Alto, and I believe next week, the council, the different city councils will be using that. And it's also supporting things like our community shuttle. One thing that I know is quite hard for myself is making the east-to-west connection across the city, so perhaps it's augmenting the routes. And it's also having conversations with the regional partners like VTA on maybe increasing some of the scheduled times and getting electrification of our Caltrain.
Thank you. Pat?
Well, Mountain View has been working to get, make public transportation more viable, and it's very challenging, but we've made quite a bit of progress. One thing I want to bring up is the reversible bus lane that we're building on Shoreline, that will make the buses going, well, they're not public buses, they're Google buses, going between the train station and our big job center, work much faster. But I really do think, as I said earlier, the use of transportation demand management and so much more of our development, and making sure that people have good access to transit is something that we really need to give a lot more thought to, as well as increasing those shuttles, making the bike paths better, and just the litany, the long laundry list of things that need to be done.
Thank you. Allison?
So, yeah, I agree that we can, you know, incrementally, or maybe faster than that, work on, you know, the long laundry list of things, ranging from bike paths to shuttles. But I think it's, we have to admit that it's really, really hard in basically suburban place like Mountain View, which is not going to become, you know, even building out North Bay Shore, we're going to still be a fairly suburban place. We will not be San Francisco, and we won't have a transit system like San Francisco. So the things that I'm reading the most about for places like ours to kind of jump-start better mass transit is micro-transit. It's what I think the Mountain View Environmental Sustainability Task Force called Discount Pooled Ride Sharing, which is where you have tiny electric cars, regular-sized electric cars, just not buses, and you can call them like an Uber or Lyft, and take those places, they can be discounted, and we can build a bus system from that.
Thank you. Lucas?
The most powerful way to encourage people, thank you, to use transit is to implement a land-use pattern that complements transit. When you segregate uses, land uses the way we have, and especially with low-density uses, you make it almost impossible to meaningfully serve a community with a transit system. So over time, I think as the community evolves, and in particular with the implementation of the North Bay Shore and East Wisbonne Precise Plans, depending on what the council does with Tarabella, I think we can retrofit this community in a way that makes transit a viable option for people. A component of this, I think, will be finding the revenue to construct the transportation projects that the council has been envisioning over the past several years. These are going to be very expensive and very challenging projects to implement. I think there are opportunities to work with VTA and with major employers to find ways of funding them, but that's what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny?
So we all seem on similar pages. I've been pushing...
I've been pushing Caltrain to increase its non-commuter service once they electrify, so that people who come from other places on the peninsula to our downtown, for example, won't drive, they'll take the train. We need to expand both the routes and the hours for the community shuttle so the middle-school students can use it to get to school, not just to get home. Been talking to Los Altos and Palo Alto about a shuttle along the San Antonio corridor, talking to neighboring cities about improving transit on both 237 and 85. Van pools are a great idea. But, you know, VTA doesn't care about us. The reason we're doing the tax, proposing the employer tax, is so we have some money of our own so we can initiate projects without waiting for them. Because if we have to wait for VTA, we won't get anything.
Thank you. And finally, John?
Yes, I fully agree. Vexing problem. The electrification of Caltrain is going to help, but you need infrastructure that is actually going to get people to make decisions about using other forms of transit than cars. I think having one transit agency is not enough. There should be multiple agencies, multiple sources to look to, things like vans and jitney buses, that sort of thing. In looking at a problem like this that is so challenging, I would also look at what maybe has not worked. And the solution proposed at the county level and also, well, it's basically a bond that was passed in 2015 and a sales tax increase. Our sales tax is really high now. But let me ask you, have you noticed the improvement in congestion?
Thank you. Moving on to another question from our audience. The Sustainability Task Force, one of their recommendations is paid parking downtown. What do you think about this? Let's start with Pat.
Whoa, this is a controversial one. Theoretically, the transportation planners have been telling us for really decades that parking in downtown actually increase, paid parking actually increases the amount of parking because people move on when they need to. But we haven't gotten it because it is controversial, and it's a big change. And if we were going to do it, I think the best, and I think we should give it some very serious consideration because if we do do it, then it could improve a lot. But it won't work if we just do it in Mountain View. I really think we need to work together with two or three of the downtowns, probably Sunnyvale, Mountain View, and Palo Alto, to try and put in a system pretty much at the same time. Redwood City's done it, and it works very well there.
Allison?
Yeah, so I think that over the long term, paid parking downtown might work. But over the short term, we're going to experience a tremendous amount of development in our downtown that I think the small, you know, with the electrification of Caltrain, the bike pedestrian underpass, the building of the hotel and office complex, and just a slew of other developments. And I'm concerned that if we make all those changes at once, that our businesses won't thrive downtown and that it'll be really difficult. So I think this is not, you know, a major new change like that. I would not, I would not put, you know, first and foremost on my agenda, and I would talk to the businesses downtown and make sure that it's, that things are phased in in a way that will work for everyone.
Thank you. John?
Yes. The issue of parking downtown is a lot different than when we first started out, you know, in my first term on that. We tried some parking, do some things with parking lot. But since then, ride-share and valet parking programs, that's helped to alleviate it. There's a book out that's well-known in the industry. It's called "The High Cost of Free Parking." And, you know, I support that. And eventually, we'll get to a point where people are going to decide whether or not they want to park or not. I'm open to the idea of paid parking because of people that are experts in the parking field say that it will help the issue. And so I'm trying to look for solutions, and paid parking could be one someday.
Thank you. Lucas?
I also support paid parking and parking demand management strategies generally. Downtown San Jose, I think, has an effective paid parking program. You can go to a local business and get validation as a way to encourage people to attract patrons to the downtown area. But most importantly, I think it must be done in close collaboration with all stakeholders. I think we need to have serious conversations with the business community. I think we need to have a conversation with Mountain View residents as well to make sure that we can implement a program that works for everybody. Because we don't want to implement a program, you know, having failed to solicit the input of all impacted stakeholders. That doesn't work. Thank you.
Lenny?
So this is one of the few recommendations of the Sustainability Task Force that I'm leaning against. It basically punishes poor people, just like the Lexus lanes, you know, the toll lanes on the freeway. I think we have to keep in mind equity when we generate revenue. So I much prefer what's been done in Palo Alto to some degree is providing the transit passes to low-income workers as a way of reducing parking demand and being equitable at the same time.
Thank you. Ellen?
Parking downtown is an issue, whether you're trying to grab dinner or run an errand. And ways to explore tackling that are something that I support. My understanding is that the city is looking at doing a paid parking study. And something that the city has done that I support, the city often does pilot programs. And that's when they take an idea, the valet is a pilot program. I know in other cities, the city of San Jose, when they were looking at a road diet, they did a pilot to see if that worked. And that way, residents and businesses can give the input on, you know, we're trying the solution, does it really tackle the issue? And I think that that is something that we need to address because if we're trying to change behaviors of folks and try to get them walking, biking, and taking other modes, just encouraging parking is necessary.
Thank you. Our next question comes from our audience as well. And that is, do you support rezoning from offices to housing or mixed use? Let's start with John.
Yes. Now, one of my campaign goals that you'll hear about is addressing the process that you have to do to go through zoning. Because precise plans and zoning changes, they take a long time, and they cost a lot of money. And often, the results are overly specific. So I would like to work with the council in what we can do to improve that process for zoning changes and make precise plans not quite as complicated as costly as they are right now. But I think that's by streamlining the process to convert to different uses, which in the number of areas of the city like Terabella and even over Old Middlefield Way, there are opportunities, but they're going to require zoning changes to bring housing.
Thank you. Lucas?
So, yes, I think this is a key component of implementing the general plan that we have, transforming what are currently predominantly or exclusively commercial areas into vibrant mixed-use neighborhoods. I think it's essential because it will provide people opportunities to live near where they work, which has a whole host of benefits, including reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gases because people have a way to get to work or to their destination without having to drive alone. It's important to addressing the jobs-housing imbalance, increasing the supply of housing. And there is no better place to do that in our job centers. So, yes, absolutely. I think this is a strategy that I hope other cities begin to adopt as well. Thank you.
Ellen?
Part of the housing crisis we're facing are that our job creations have not kept up, our housing hasn't kept up with our job creation. And as has been mentioned, we have a jobs-housing imbalance. So I am open to looking at rezoning of office to housing and mixed use. And I think that one of the great things that we're doing right now is reviewing our precise plans, looking at these change areas, and also involving the community as we're making these decisions. So when we've looked at, for example, the Terabella Visioning Session, I went to both and hearing from the existing businesses and offices that are there, hearing from the residents and the community, and perhaps using that as an opportunity to create parks and open space in a neighborhood, in a community that needs it.
Thank you. Allison?
So, yeah, I think it's critical that we create more housing and shift the balance to a better jobs-housing balance there. A couple places in particular that come to mind. One is that, looking at our downtown, there are a lot of proposals for additional office. And living near the downtown, myself, I know that a lot of residents are concerned about that, that we're becoming kind of an office with an office parking lot. And people would prefer that there be more housing downtown. I've also talked to some, not everyone, in the Moffett area that would like, when you talked about mixed use with housing, you know, would like our downtown extended down Moffett, you know, walkable streets with retail or restaurants on the ground floor and housing above. And people have also told me they're concerned about El Camino, that it's losing in many places a lot of its, you know, ground-floor retail, which makes it even less walkable rather than more.
Thank you. Lenny?
The best place to build housing in Mountain View and surrounding communities is in areas that are centers of employment, for the convenience of the employees and the employers, for the environment. Just makes a lot of sense. I don't want to see us tearing down neighborhoods. I don't want to see us tearing down apartment buildings. This is the place to build. We're in the enviable position that property owners agree, and we're seeing in Terabella and East Wisman, they want to do the rezoning. And finally, in terms of downtown, one of the difficulties we have is we have small parcels downtown, and we can't, they can't provide the parking necessary. So I've been proposing that we have market-rate senior housing on some of those parcels without parking or with very little parking as a way of getting more housing downtown. Because I've talked to at least two property owners who say, "Yeah, we wanted to do housing, but the city wouldn't let us because we couldn't provide enough parking spaces." So there are ways to make it happen throughout Mountain View, and I think we're on the right track.
Thank you. And Pat?
Yeah, I certainly do agree. We have converted some commercial uses to housing for many years. The Wisman Station is an excellent example. That was a commercial property for many years, and the owner tried to market it and wasn't able to. And so it had to be cleaned up a great deal, but it's been made into a beautiful neighborhood. I think the trick is that we want our land-use decisions to produce nice, balanced neighborhoods that includes housing, places to work, parks, schools, and of course, commercials. So there's that need for the mix because they're all of those uses that we all need on a regular basis. And we have done that in the North Bay Shore and the East Wisman Precise Plan that we're currently working on. And it's also something that's kind of a backbone of the general plan. I think somebody mentioned that, that, you know, there are those areas of interest where we want more housing.
Thank you. Our next question is also from the audience. Do you support the efforts by the city of Mountain View and Mountain View-Wisman School District to put teacher housing on city-controlled developments? Let's start with Lucas.
Are you talking about Cooper Park by any chance? I broadly am supportive of efforts, collaboration between the city and the Mountain View-Wisman School District and any school district to provide opportunities for affordable housing for teachers. I do not support teacher housing on Cooper Park. But I think there are other opportunities elsewhere in the city where we can identify land and, you know, work with the community to make sure it's an appropriate place and allow for teacher housing that will assist school districts in, again, attracting and retaining talent. Thank you.
Lenny?
So I don't support putting housing on what's currently a park. And we don't control it anyhow, but that's beyond the point. We have opportunities elsewhere in town where you're talking to the school district about putting housing in a major redevelopment near Middlefield. That's, we'll be discussing that this fall. That's a great opportunity. I actually want to make sure that we don't just look at teachers, but, you know, we have the authority to provide housing for city employees as well. And I've long called for housing for planners because the number-one obstacle to building housing in Mountain View is the shortage of planners. We hire them, they do good work, and then they go off and work someplace else. So teachers are important, but they aren't the only middle-income group that we need to protect. And because they're public employees, there are certain things that the city can do to address their needs. But we can also do that for our own employees.
Thank you. Ellen?
Great. So I support our teachers. The idea of teacher housing is something that I also do support. But what I try to bring to each project is a thoughtful approach to the existing neighborhood as well as the composition of the neighborhood and residential input. So for Cooper Park, I don't think that that's the place for us to look at teacher housing, but I do support for putting it in other areas of the city. And our educators are the most important. I'm proud to have supported Measure B in 2016 and Measure E this last cycle in June. As was mentioned, we need to retain and attract our teachers because one joked with me that they are a teacher, but they need to have somebody who's in the private sector to be able to afford to stay in the region. So creating these types of opportunities for teachers to be able to live where they work is very important.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, I just want to say right at the get-go that I live within sight of Cooper Park, so I will not be voting on this if it does come to council. But generally, I'm supportive of teacher housing, like everyone has said, but it needs to be in the right place. And so I'm really, I was really pleased to hear that the school district and the city were working on some alternative places that may work out well and they'll be coming to council. One particular project is supposed to be coming to council in about a month. And I think that's great. We need to be creative about these things. Retaining teachers has been quite the subject. I remember when my son was in seventh grade, he had ten science teachers. And that was just because of this housing issue. And they could get great jobs other places, and they did.
Thank you. John?
Yes, we currently have a great working relationship with the school districts. I don't know how many voters know, but the school districts actually own that land. And they're looking for a solution to the housing crisis that could possibly involve a school on site. I'm interested in preserving that relationship, but it's on school land. And schools are facing a housing crisis for their teachers as critical as we are anywhere else in the city. So I'm open-minded about a solution that may allow schools to use their land to address a very, very critical housing issue. They have the land, which is very scarce. There may be ideas about other opportunities for teacher housing to get somewhere. But for the time being, until I've studied the issue more, I'm open-minded about schooling, you know, in Cooper Park.
Thank you. Allison?
So I think as this city becomes more dense, it's really critical that we save our parks and actually grow the number of parks we have and the places that we have them so they're accessible to everyone. Everyone needs to see some green space. So although I certainly, I support our teachers, and I think it's critical to have great schools. We need to have great teachers and not just attract them, retain them over the long term. But I think we can handle this in different ways. I think there are other places. I think that there are other ways, other tools the city can use. There are land swaps and other ways that we could develop teacher housing without developing it at Cooper Park.
Okay, thank you. We're almost there. We're almost there. We've got another four hours, and we'll be good to go. We decided to go ahead and run this like a council meeting to get you... We decided to go ahead and run this like a council meeting, to get you ready to be here until one or two o'clock in the morning. Now, seriously, our next question comes from the audience, and it is, "To reduce congestion in downtown, would you be in favor of a study to see if Moffett Field could be used as a transit center for parking cars and shuttle people to North Bay Shore and downtown?" Who wants to tackle this one? John, let's start with you.
I think I talked to, excuse me, I think I talked to someone that posed that question during the meeting. And we talked about the opportunities for Moffett Field, which are absolutely, you know, mind-blowing in some ways. And the idea of a transit center at Moffett Field could be an extension off of the current transit stop. That's right at Ellis Street there, as you go in the other gate. And the idea of having a transit center there, it's possible. I think we've talked about other avenues, you know, extending either, you know, a light rig, either extending light rail, probably more difficult. But the idea of an alternate connection to the North Bay Shore and the downtown, whether that would be a transit center per se, but it would be a great location to extend the access to North Bay Shore or downtown or both.
Thank you. Lucas?
So it's an interesting idea. It's not something I've considered. I'm not sure we necessarily need to have, it sounds like sort of an off-site parking area, you know, in Moffett Field. But I think, as John said, exploring opportunities to expand the existing transit, sort of network that we have in Mountain View, working with the Transportation Management Association that is governed by the major employers in North Bay Shore and a few others, exploring, continuing to investigate the feasibility of the automated guideway that the council has been talking about for a few years, connecting North Bay Shore to the downtown area. There are a lot of discussions underway about maximizing mobility and connectivity. Again, interesting idea, but I think there are other solutions that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
So I have to say, this is a totally new one to me. I haven't been thinking about this. I'd have to get a map out to kind of figure out exactly what you're talking about. You know, I'm open to, I'm open to alternatives. Certainly, transit, transportation is important. And, you know, if I sat down and looked at the basics of this, I could decide whether it was, whether it was worth having a study on. I would really have to look into it a little more.
Thank you. Ellen?
I'm open to ways to reduce the congestion, traffic congestion, that we seem to see all over the city. But as was mentioned in my tenure on EPC, it's not something that we've explored, having Moffett as a transit center. But any way that we can expand our network to the North Bay Shore area is something I support. I see many people commuting by bike or walking to get out there, and I know that we do have the Ellis Stop there. Many years ago, when Mountain View invested in VTA, it wasn't explored to increase that area as an additional transit stop into North Bay Shore. That would take a lot of infrastructure and funding. But I know that the issue of traffic and congestion is once so great that it does involve regional partnerships and conversation.
Thank you. Lenny?
So this isn't new for me. I've been asking NASA to do this for years. It would be particularly useful for Charline Amphitheater. It's so hard to get out of there after a concert. If people could take a bus or a shuttle to the Ellis Street Light Rail Station area, that would be a great idea. Unfortunately, NASA leadership seems to believe that the Space Act prevents them from doing it. It doesn't, they don't have the authorization to do it. My lawyer friends in DC say they do have the authority to do an easement for public transit. And as we discussed with them, their 2,000-unit housing proposal, I will continue to raise this issue. In fact, I was planning to ask the NASA Administrator about this tomorrow, when he comes out to NASA Ames.
Thank you. And Pat?
Yes, there, I certainly have heard this talked about, particularly with respect to improving the connectivity between the Moffett area and the North Bay Shore area. You know, really, there's almost none, except 101. And that really creates a lot of congestion. Hadn't thought about it in terms, so much in terms of the downtown. We have the train station here. The train stops here. We're not going to change that. So we will always have to have an important transit center in the downtown. But as everybody's been talking about, the way to make transit work for people is to have it easily accessible. And having more access points that really work and have connectivity with other areas is very important.
Thank you. And now we're going to start our last question before we have our final comments. And that, our last question to you from the audience is, "What is your number-one priority or passion for your vision of Mountain View's future?" And let's start with Ellen.
My number-one priority and vision for Mountain View is to, for the city to remain the welcoming, open place that it was for my family 70 decades ago. And one of the priorities that I have had, sorry, seven decades ago, one of the priorities, it's been a long, it feels like 70 decades up here. One of the priorities that I do have, that I mentioned earlier, was making sure that we are, as we're generating our housing, we're keeping opportunities for our middle-class residents. We have, for low to very low income, we are able to qualify for some state and federal subsidy funding. For middle-income, it's just so much more difficult to leverage. And I think as we are trying to include our stock, we need to have a variety.
Thank you. Lenny?
The best way to preserve our leadership in the world economy, to maintain our quality of life, to protect the environment, and maintain the diversity of our community, is to build, as I've said, mixed-use, medium-density neighborhoods in previously commercial areas near centers of employment with transit, with retail, with parks, with housing, with offices. It's a no-brainer. We're doing it, and we just have to stay the course. And what I ask is, when you vote in November, you look at the people who've been working for that all along.
Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, we passed a great Precise Plan for the North Bay Shore in December of 2017. What we need to do is build the neighborhoods that are described in that plan. That, to me, will add just a tremendous amount of housing, and hopefully serve as enough of an example to our neighboring communities that they'll follow suit. My goal will be that someday the supply of housing in the Bay Area is enough so that my children can afford to buy a house here.
Thank you. Allison?
So, so we're, as people have said, we're undergoing a great deal of development, mixed-use development, housing, transit, and so forth. My main goal is, as a councilperson, and I think I would be a unique voice in this, is to get the details right. I'm getting, my neighbors are telling me that we're losing tree canopy, that we're, we have the potential of losing parks, that we're not developing them enough, that they feel that schools aren't being developed with enough forethought, with enough cooperation with the school board, that we're not marching towards, the jobs-housing balance may be getting away from us, chipped more towards office and less towards housing, that we're possibly not creating enough affordable housing along with the housing we're creating. So that we work on those details, along with building, we build it right.
Thank you. Lucas?
Mountain View has been a welcoming, diverse, and inclusive community. And my vision is to ensure that Mountain View remains a welcoming, diverse, and inclusive community. I would like for everyone to be able to have the opportunity to establish roots here, whether you're a young professional couple that's trying to, you know, make enough money to buy a house, or if you're a senior seeking to age in place. I would like for Mountain View to remain accessible to everybody. And that means aggressively addressing the housing crisis, implementing the very robust Precise Plans that Mountain View is either considering or has adopted, adding enough housing supply to meet the demand, fighting hard for affordable housing. All of these, I think, are essential if we are serious about making sure that Mountain View remains a community that is welcoming to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, John?
Yes, other council members, or other candidates, rather, have talked about, alluded to the budget, and the budget that we have. And what I'm most focusing on, the top priority, is maintaining the fiscal condition of the city, to make sure that we're never, you know, having to cut back on library or public safety or anything. And we're in a time, it's extraordinary, the revenue surpluses that we have right now. But what about the other times that could be ahead? The city's planning for that. My approach to this, though, is that, you know, we raise revenue as we need it through economic growth, and not by raising taxes and raising fees that have just skyrocketed in recent years. So the main focus is on the budget with other issues that we've already talked about.
Thank you. All right, let's give all the candidates a big round of applause before we start the... And I just want to say thank you for sharing your views with us this evening. And so now we're going to start our final comments. Each candidate has one minute. We'll start with you, Lenny.
In March of 2014, when I found that campaign for Balanced Mountain View, no one else was talking about the jobs-housing imbalance and the shortage of housing. Now everybody is, that's great. But I want you to look beyond the talk and see who's going to walk the walk, and elect people to the council who are going to stay the course and build the housing that we're planning to build. Secondly, because it hasn't been brought up so far, this community has been blanketed by paid-signature gatherers for the past several months, selling a deceptive measure to try to repeal rent control essentially. And throughout the campaign, I'm going to ask everybody on the dais here tonight, will they denounce that as a deceptive measure? It's one thing to be for or against rent control, but to try to sell something that basically would mislead, would mislead the voters and take away protections from our residents, that's not a good thing.
Pat?
First, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce again for hosting this evening. And just mentioned that it really has been a wonderful experience for me to serve on your city council for four years, and I certainly would like to do it for another four. I'm a civil engineer, and one of the things that I think it's important to realize is that the infrastructure that a city has is mostly civil works. Roads, water systems, parks, those are the things that civil engineers deal with. So I have a perspective that I think is valuable on the council. Also, I've really jumped in with both feet into regional activities, particularly with respect to water. I have applied my engineering skills to serving on boards that deal with climate change impacts, mitigating airport noise, enhancing regional transit, and preventing homelessness. I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Lucas?
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, and thank you all for attending this candidate forum, the first in a series of opportunities to hear the candidates answer complex questions in an unreasonably short amount of time. So I hope that you've learned something. I'm running for city council. You are tired and hungry. So email me if you have any questions, lucas@ramirezforcouncil.com. Please visit my website, ramirezforcouncil.com. I have a litany of issues and my positions on them. I want to be accessible to you, so feel free to reach out. Please ask me the hardest question you could think of, and I will do my best to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you all for sticking it out with us for our not-so-four-hour time together. But hopefully what you've heard from me tonight are my deep roots in Mountain View, my commitment to public service, and my commitment also to working and collaborating with residents. When I've been knocking on doors, I say, you know, "I'm not coming to this with my own agenda. My agenda is yours," and to make sure that your voice is heard. Some priorities I am thinking about are creating opportunities for our middle-income residents and a variety of housing, whether that be rental or ownership opportunities, shoring up our public safety. They are increasingly getting 911 calls that have to do with mental health or social services, so how are they getting the appropriate training? And protecting this quality of life that we have. All of you are here tonight because you love this city, you love your neighborhood and what exists there, and how do we make sure that that continues? I bring an individual voice and look forward to knocking on your door sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yes, by the way, that Christmas tree lighting was 19 years ago. You know, one thing when you have a candidate forum, was the questions were so encompassing and wide-ranging, they covered my goals. So, I mean, that I actually had. So, spot-on to Bruce, we're actually going to finish a few minutes early, you know, of what he told us we would do. So I'll just say that, you know, be careful about who you vote for. And because until 2015, when Balanced Mountain View came, we had a council that had instructed Merlon Geier to, who wanted, who proposed housing where some very, very nice offices and a theater and a hotel are right now, but there's no housing. And that was the council. The council that was elected and made policy before Balanced Mountain View is very important. The same thing goes for the budget. And I would also say, like, the transit center.
Thank you. Allison?
So thank you all for coming out. Again, we're in a time of great change in Mountain View. I believe our council needs at once, at least one strong advocate with education and experience in making great spaces. I've worked in, as I said before, in downtowns, creating walkable streets, creating great schoolyards and parks, and creating a variety of types of affordable housing. I've been hearing a lot of concerns from my neighbors close by and farther flung recently about changes in Mountain View and ways they could be better. And I'd like to hear from you as well. And in addition to that, I'd like you to visit my website, the name of which, which you can Google, but I haven't memorized it actually, so that you can check out the details.
Thank you. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you all for coming this evening. I'd also like to thank our elected officials that are in the audience, Councilmember Margaret Abakoga, our Vice Mayor Lisa Maticek, Councilmember Ken Rosenberg, and Councilmember John McAllister. So thank you all for coming. I believe, oh, who? Oh, I'm sorry. And from the school board, Ellen. Thank you so much. And Jose in the back.
And Fiona.
And everyone that is elected, thank you so much for coming. We truly, truly appreciate it. But seriously, I hope that as citizens and voters in Mountain View, that you found that this forum was informative and a way for you to perhaps get to know the candidates a little bit better. And so thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, this forum is being recorded by KMVT. You will be able to find that at the Mountain View Chamber website, chambermv.org. And I'd also like to thank Heidi over there, who does all of our social media, and she's been streaming and Facebook-living and all of that sort of thing. So thank you so much. And we are done. So have a good evening and be safe. Thank you.